I'll go ahead and call the work session to order. First item on tonight's agenda will be a discussion on Neil Schaefer being selected to perform professional engineering services dedicated to reviews for the Planning Commission cases for the Planning Department. So Hunter, basically, I think what council needs to hear is there's a request to hire Neil Schaefer to perform reviews, which your department has historically done. And I know that you're short-staffed right now, so just tell us why you need it, maybe a little bit of the scope of work, and how long you would envision that taking place.
Sure. So, and we actually include this in the budget, so this wasn't a short-term solution. In reviews that planners typically do, we run into quite frequently issues that an engineer knows. So when you're looking at data models for drainage, things like that, that's not something a planner is trained for. So we actually defunded a position in the budget and put this $40,000 to include for engineering services throughout the year. We do not, we're not able to determine what our caseload is month to month, so it's typically an ebb and flow. Tomorrow's our applications, and it might be, Councilman Martin, you're on the Planning Commission now, so just a little bit of warning for December. It's going to be a very rough month. And we have quite a few cases coming our way, and so, for example, that one, we would use more of that budgeted $40,000. Then we might go on a two- or three-month ebb, then we might get inundated again. So the request was for $40,000. That would be geared toward traffic reviews and mostly drainage for those services. We would still work every case and review it for compliance on other parts of the subdivision regulations and/or zoning ordinance where applicable, or any other ordinances that may be applicable. But it was really those things that we have a tough time getting to with, when there's a question about a, and this is where an engineer, I can't even speak to a, do you know what a HEACRES is? I've heard the name, HEACRES.
Did I say that? I want to have my chauffeur in the back room. Richard, would you please answer that?
That's a modeling software that you use to look at downstream, affect the downstream drainage.
So when somebody says, "We use this one instead of that one," you know, that's a challenge for us to review. So the request was in the budget to defund a position and better address some of those sensitive issues that we can have, and they can do it much more efficiently. So where they put a couple hours in per case, we might take two weeks trying to corner Richard, ask, beg, and borrow, and steal for those answers. So, do y'all have any questions? Because I actually have a request because of the workload. I didn't know this when we put it on the agenda, because of the workload we're getting tomorrow. The request was to allow the mayor to approve the selection, not for the do-not-to-exceed If we wait till next council meeting, everything we're getting tomorrow, we're going to have a hard time reviewing those cases, if possible. And I don't know if it's possible, just if there's any way possible, that I would like to amend the request to approve the mayor to negotiate that contract for a do-not-to-exceed as well as the selection.
That is what, it approves the selection and allows her to negotiate.
Yeah.
But that usually comes back to us, though.
That's correct. And by the, in our cycle of reviews, we'll have to take intake cases tomorrow, in about a week and a half, have comments back out to the applicant. So being able to get those in the, if we have an engineer available, get those plans to them, let them be reviewing it. So when we get comments back to the applicant, it'll be too late for us to use that this month if we come back next council meeting.
Well, you're asking us to write a blank check, is what you're asking us to do by not knowing what the fee schedule is before we...
But the not exceed...
It's not to exceed.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is the blank check is on what their fee is.
It's not to exceed.
Yeah, but not to exceed whether it's $200 an hour, $100.
$40,000, though, right?
It's $40,000, isn't it?
Yeah, $40,000.
Yeah, but it's still blank. You don't know how much they're going to charge for services. They have a limit.
Right.
You don't know if you're going to get $100 or $200.
Right. Well, the check is $40,000 max, but you don't know how much work you're getting for that.
Exactly. So it's still a blank check, in my opinion. I think it's, I think we're setting a bad precedent on what I think our engineering costs are going through the roof. And I think that, I mean, if we had, you know, some hint of what that was going to be prior, do you happen to have that with you?
We did this last year for, Mr. Conyers, you were on the Planning Commission when we reviewed for...
That one particular project?
Yes, sir. And there was a mayor approval up to $5,000, and it was about $1,200 for one case review for a traffic study, and two traffic studies actually attending the meeting.
If they came and said for the same terms as we agreed upon in the past, or something like that, I may feel comfortable. We don't, we don't know the terms.
What, what, what agenda that was, again?
I think it's 12, maybe?
12.
So...
Is it 13?
Boy, that's a lucky number.
13, yeah.
So the only issue, I mean, I haven't just finished up about a year on the Planning Commission. I just know how backed up they are, how much pressure they're under, and I know they're down some staffing, too, so...
You mean Hunter's department, not the Planning and Zoning Commission, but Planning and Zoning Department?
The department, yes. The department is extremely backed up at the moment, and I know that it's, we do have this, I believe, in the budget. So really, the issue, to your point, Jack, is whether or not we're, if we have the exact rates negotiated upfront, I mean...
Well, my thought on that is...
I thought you couldn't have the rates up front.
You can't, you have to negotiate it, but, I mean, the way I see it is, we as a counselor are protecting ourselves by saying it's only up to $40,000. But what it does is it shifts the burden to Hunter and to the mayor specifically to negotiate the best rate we can possibly get, so that you guys, who are the ones relying on the work and relying on the studies, to get as much work as you can.
Exactly. You've got to stretch those dollars as far as you can stretch them.
I know there's a cap there.
How would you order it tomorrow when the mayor's out of town, anyway? How would you have rates tomorrow negotiated in a contract signed?
I'd have to get the engineer to provide that information, so it's ready for her review. And I couldn't get it in their lap tomorrow, there's no way. But we won't process the files for a couple of days and have them ready to be sent out till probably Thursday.
Why didn't you bring this to us last meeting?
Well, it wasn't budgeted. So I've had it in the budget, we would have had the schedule...
It wasn't budgeted, you just said it was budgeted.
It wasn't budgeted because we didn't pass the budget until the last council.
Yeah, but we knew it was in the budget. We could have put it on the agenda, like we did some other budgeted items after we passed the budget.
And I was hearing other departments getting kind of abused for putting things on the agenda that wasn't budgeted, so I was a little timid to do that.
Correct me, though, Lisa, didn't we intentionally put a few things on the last meeting so that they were considered after we passed the budget?
Yes, we did.
Well, and I was on vacation the last meeting, so I wasn't here to discuss that.
Hunter, how much was the position that you, or that we defunded in order to...
We were paying the person that vacated that position in, on the lower end, 51, 52, I believe, salary-based, salary.
I don't have any reason to suspect that they're not going to give us a fair price, but if we pass that, you know, we have no rates to approve. You know, we're already approving the selection. What you'd have to do is change the resolution to say, "And we authorize the mayor to negotiate the fee schedule and execute a contract for whatever that fee schedule is." That's not unheard of now. I mean, it's been done many times in the past.
And, you know, y'all, I'm here at every meeting. I don't ask for money. I mean, defunding a position, actually trying to save money when we're inundated as much, you know, we've saved quite a bit with our GIS work in-house, haven't asked for money there. I'm going to buy tomorrow, this month. We've got, and I don't want, I don't have applications yet, so I can't ask for these. I can assure you, we'll do our due diligence on that fee schedule and get that as much as possible. My request could potentially be the same one as we had last year. It's their 2021 fee schedule, that have to extend that into 2022.
It may not be likely, though, with the labor market, too, that percent.
Yeah. And, you know, but I...
I mean, I think even whether we have the fee schedule or not, I don't think that, I don't think that's going to change the fact that we still need to do something, and we're still going to probably go with the dollar amount that we've already put in place and capped. So the mayor has to negotiate the fee schedule, but whether we have that in place right now or not, I mean, I think we still need to move forward and do something.
Well, I don't think anybody's questioned. I mean, that's why it's on, it's on the agenda for the selection.
Right.
And the only difference is that, you know, whether or not you allow the mayor to award the contract before the fee schedules come back before us.
Before we approve whatever they've negotiated. Now, here's my other question, Hunter, is how many, how many spots are we down right now in your department that we need to fill?
We are down two planners. We defunded once, there was a three total from where we were last year, and down two city planner positions.
Do we have any, have we, I mean, I'm assuming those are posted, have we interviewed, are we kind of moving?
We've posted, we're on our third round, so we've worked through the interviews from the first two postings. We've actually made a job offer, kind of waiting to hear on one of those. We're on our third posting. We did get some interviews that were, came through, are outside source, so nationally, so we're in the process of reviewing those and setting up interviews.
How long, how long after we bring somebody, I know we've had this conversation, I'm just trying to refresh myself here, is I know that, you know, you can be a seasoned planner, but every place is different.
Right.
How long do we expect it to take someone who's brought in to get up to speed and really be an asset to us in the Planning Department?
Fully up to speed, where, especially these type of engineering things, you're at a year. We can start making use in the first month, so it's piecemeal, you know, looking at zoning compliance for building permits, usually the first step. Then we start getting into board of adjustment cases, and you kind of build on that, but before it's time for a big subdivision and case and handling solely where it's off our shoulders, you're at a year.
How does, how quickly does somebody like Neil Schaefer come on board and get up to speed to know, you know, I mean, the person that's on their staff is doing the work.
Right.
Don't they have a learning curve, too?
They do, but where we're looking for them, the areas we're looking for their expertise are more objective, so they're trained for that. So for drainage, you know, we do have some nuances in our subdivision regulations, but for the most part, that's pretty similar around, and they're familiar working in this region. So they're able to pick up on that by reading our subdivision regulations, just as the way an engineer working for the developer would. They have to use our subdivisions, read through it, make an interpretation of what the drainage should be. Neil Schaefer is able to do the same thing. There's a plus with Neil Schaefer, they also have our comp plan and are going to be working, reworking our codes toward the end of this, so them being familiar with that is an asset as well. So we get a little bit more for money.
Nobody that you're going to hire is going to fill that position, you say?
In planning, there's usually two paths of training. One is more architectural-based, landscape architecture-based, and then the other one is policy-based. Neither one of those really looks at how to read a traffic study or a drainage plan. That's, and the policy-based city planners, you know, sometimes don't know how to review plan, look at replans. So it's just not something we're trained to do, and I think in the past, it was relying on the engineer to do it right, and we need, I think we just need that to...
If we had a city engineer to do that, would that solve, a city engineer that could not only do that, but do some other jobs as well?
Absolutely.
Not to take the public works, I'm talking strictly to do, you know, more engineering reviews and not worry about day-to-day operation of a department, but do engineering, could do the HVAC, the engineering, I mean, maybe.
Well, and where that would be incredibly useful, you know...
You've got somebody that does water and somebody that does structures, typically they don't do each of those.
But, and what you see, I know a few other cities around us does have that position, where it's really beneficial to us, they review it on the front end, but then they're also here, you know, we've got a lot of subdivision that's taking a lot of our time, we're going out reviewing, see if it's being built correctly. And, you know, because it's one thing to approve the plans, but then are they actually constructing it? That's where an engineer can really help out as well, so...
I just don't want to go out and hire somebody at $100,000 plus, but then they've taken the place of a $40,000 contract.
Right.
I don't do that either.
Well, and I think evaluating, even in the budget, kind of hinted that that might be the, you know, it might come back in aspirant, once we figure out what the ETJ does and all of those things.
And that may be a position we needed sometime. I feel like when we brought it up in the past, one of the issues was, and I think this was the same case for in-house logger versus in-house engineer, was that you're still going to have all these specialties that you've got to hire out, and you're going to probably have to have some kind of support staff and software, et cetera, that goes with it. And that's why we kind of lean back to the, we're going to come out better outsourcing it.
And there was a good avenue that we did discuss. I don't know if actually going out after a registered engineer is the best, if we want to kind of try it out, having, getting someone out of school, we don't need their stamp, you know, we need their skill set, and being able to work under a registered engineer might prove beneficial in partnership. So, and at that point, you could hire a little less than going out and hiring a registered engineer, so that might be something that's more...
So Hunter, how long do you think the contract for this particular service would be with Neil Schaefer?
One year. That's what we budgeted for, one year. The reason I didn't put any time limit on, we have a year of reviews. This was intended to, you know, save the position we would have as a planner, and I just can't ever determine what cases we're going to get. We can evaluate that a little bit by pre-application meetings, but we have a lot of cases that we don't have to meet with, so I might be surprised tomorrow with quite a few cases on top of what we do know about, and that just fluctuates month to month.
If you had someone tomorrow to be hired on, could they do the, what'd you say, HERRIC? HERRIC?
HEACRES.
HEACRES?
Not a city planner.
That's, so you would need this service anyway, even if we hired somebody?
That, that was...
Is that what I'm hearing?
That was the logic in defunding a position and requesting this contract as well. It fits better than what, in our needs, I can get a city planner that can review zoning code and make sure roads are the right width, then sidewalks are in place, and street trees and all of those things, but having that asset that can help us streamline the reviews for traffic studies, if you've ever read one, or that's a magical science I've still yet to understand, and been looking at them for 16 years, you know, the drainage portions that, we can look at a narrative and see if they've, you know, accomplished some big things, but we've had a case that's lingered five months now, going back and forth with engineers on this, where one engineer to another can frankly call BS sometimes better than I can.
So let me ask you, no, just, because I'm trying to make, what, what was the fee cost for 2021? You said you had a fee cost that may roll over, but we know inflation's not on it, but what was that?
For the city planner that left us, the salary position?
With Neil Schaefer.
With Neil Schaefer.
Oh, we had a, we did a one-time mayor approved back in February, I believe, some February, March.
Yeah, it was early.
And they did supply the fee schedule then. It was about $1,200 for, to review that project twice and be at the meetings. Most of the time, we wouldn't need them to be at the meeting, that's only on...
Describe what that means, $1,200? Like an hour?
No, that was total cost, so it was based on, their fee schedule at that point was based on hours, per hour cost of what the review would be, then they had a charge for if they needed to be at meetings.
How many hours was that for the $1,200?
That one, I don't know the total number off the top of my head. I'd say 12.
About eight hours?
About 50 an hour.
That sounds about right. And that one was a little inflated, because we did actually ask them to come to the meeting and be able to answer questions for the Planning Commission, which would not be a regular occurrence.
And what makes you, you're in a hurry, and we want to trust you, we want to trust the mayor to come back with a new fee schedule. In fact, it says to establish a fee schedule and not to exceed limit. Well, we could simply alter that resolution and say, "With a not-to-exceed limit, thereby there's no gas working there." We can say, "With a not-to-exceed limit of $40,000." But you want to get started on this right away. What makes you believe that they can get started tomorrow? I mean, because we would, unless they already know what they're going to charge us, and like I said, I know you select them, but, you know, they're not a dummy. They know that they've been selected, and that's coming before the council tonight to see whether or not we do approve that selection. So they've probably got everybody, you know, ready, sitting on go, or else you would be able to say they can start right away. How do you know they can't, they can't start for two weeks, and then we're rushing for no reason?
Well, and that, part of the reason they were a good fit is because they don't do work in this area for subdivisions or plans like that, so they're not doing, you know, we're not in a compete environment, we're not going to find a case that they're working on. Potentially a traffic study, but, you know, that is, that's a tough one when you've got to come and ask for negotiations and then go back and negotiate that, so...
Yeah, I mean, it's got to be negotiated, they've got to assign somebody to work with the city affair. I mean, I just...
Well, I think the, what I would assume the issue is, and I get what you're saying is, you know, they can't...
I'm trying to find a reason not to rush this.
Well, they probably won't start work for another week and a half, best-case scenario, but the problem is, is that's going to be the case no matter when we approve it, whether it's today or two weeks from now, so you're kicking it out.
You're pushing it off the start.
Yeah, you're delaying it. If you don't do it tonight, it'll be a month before they can help us if we wait two weeks to the next meeting to push.
Maybe, maybe not. I mean, there's nothing to prevent the mayor from, you know, putting that fee schedule in everybody's box and saying, "Are you guys going to approve it at the next meeting?" And if she, if everybody kind of, you know, the straw poll goes, "Yeah, we're going to compete it, we're going to award it," then they can get all those wheels in motion.
Yeah, but I mean, I think you could do the same thing if we pushed it tonight.
Be happy to get the fee schedule.
And have her circulate something whenever she gets it and says, "What do y'all think about this?" And kind of gets our input on what she's attempting to negotiate.
Or should we just set the number?
It sets a weak position.
Well, I don't think we can set the...
Not-to-exceed number?
Well, the not-to-exceed number we can set.
I wouldn't know what to start with, I mean...
Well, he came with some, well, okay, I mean, that's kind of, I mean, I was feeling...
Well, I mean, the not-to-exceeds for the year, and I'm going to preserve that as much as possible, because I don't want to run into that next, within the next year.
They're going to have maybe six or seven different, they may have several different planner classifications.
Depends on what...
75, 100, 125, 150, I don't think we want to take a guess as to what that might be and put a not-to-exceed on that.
Right, because we might be giving them a ticket.
Yeah, we may be too low, we may be too high.
I was, yeah, so, yeah.
We're not talking aggregate, we're talking about for whatever person.
The hourly rate.
The hourly rate, that's what I was asking, you know, and you're looking at the hours.
Yeah, I would, yeah, I would not ask that, because that's, I don't know what that is, and I couldn't answer that.
The hope is that they're watching right now and know that we expect a very good deal. Very good deal.
And you can tell us when it comes up.
Watching very closely.
They probably are, if they're doing their due diligence.
That's right.
They have somebody watching it.
They may know they're on a work session, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, I mean, my thought is, I kind of appreciate the position we're in in planning. I don't, y'all know, in general, I don't like breaking with the rules, but the way I'm seeing this is I think we're looking at probably a two-week turnaround, whether it's today, and then they can start in two weeks, or we wait two weeks, and then they can start two weeks. And my concern is that that's probably too long to be of significant value to you, especially on the short-term stuff you're talking about. So I at least see the reasoning behind needing this and doing it sort of out of order this time.
And I can get their fee schedule tomorrow, if you can do that, and I know the mayor is out tomorrow, but I'm sure I can get their fee schedule tomorrow and send it in.
I don't want to sound overly important, but you know, also, when is the mayor going to be back?
Tomorrow, I don't, Mr. Vaughn.
Tomorrow, I don't, Mr. Vaughn. I mean, if it had to be done tomorrow, you could authorize anybody, any council member to negotiate a fee schedule, it doesn't have to be the mayor.
Okay.
I'm okay with that. And I can't, I wish I could kind of tell you the cases, but I don't, we don't talk about cases before we get an application, but after a work session, if anybody wants to kind of see what we're dealing with coming tomorrow, I'd be happy to talk to you.
So we have to immediately consider this tonight?
It's already on there.
It's already on there. But we're doing something.
But it's a resolution.
We'd have to make that amendment.
So we have to make an amendment.
It's not an ordinance, so it's not something to introduce and let you open. It's just a resolution.
But we have to amend it, is what I'm...
Yeah, but we can amend the resolution, that's not really breaking with the rules.
Yeah, the motion would just have to encompass the things we're talking about.
Right.
Right. Well, we've got a few things to think about.
Yeah.
All right.
Thank you, Hunter. Thanks, Hunter.
Thank you.
All right, counsel, we do have, we're going to go through these reports pretty quick, committee updates, and we get to department head updates. I know, you know, sometimes when it looks like we have a real short work session agenda, sometimes we spend a long time on department head updates and all that's important, but I want to remind you, we have an agenda meeting, and we have 39 items on the agenda. So don't get up here and get long-winded and spend 30 minutes, you know, talking about something that maybe could be summarized in just a few minutes. All right, committee updates. Councilman Martin?
Went to the reg board meeting this past Wednesday. I think it went well. The soccer deal, we're still kicking that around, and hopefully we'll come to some type of resolution soon. But other than that, I'm excited about the Recreation Department, where are we going?
Councilman Conyers?
No update.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes, attended the bike and pet committee meeting a couple weeks ago. No specific update, but they've got a lot, a lot of things that they're looking at and working on. And then, secondly, I didn't attend the historic preservation meeting, but my wife did, and I know that they're working on some things to get more educational information out there to people on historic preservation and what might be important and applicable in the city. So look forward to some of that coming up soon.
Councilman Boone?
No report.
Okay. I had a couple of committee meetings since the last council meeting. We have a street and traffic control committee meeting, it was pretty lengthy, we discussed a lot of old business. None of these required a recommendation debris brought before the city council at this moment. For instance, there were some traffic patterns that the chief of police is going to speak to, one of the new schools, the, actually, the St. James Episcopal Church School's on there, some talk about traffic patterns around that. I think the police are just going to talk to them about that specifically, maybe a no-left turn into there in the morning, because it's backing traffic up through the clock or, I mean, the flower clock intersection there. There was also some discussion about some speed calming devices, and we're going to send some staff out and look at some other, you know, you want to put in speed bumps or whatever as a very last resort, and stop signs are not always the answer, speed bumps not always the answer, but maybe of some natural narrowing of the streets, there's some beautification projects, so we could incorporate beautification with, and they could be traffic calming devices. So there were a couple of instances of that. There were a couple of items that just require the staff to tackle and not the city council to tackle. We tabled a couple of these. We had some requests for some speed calming devices that came with no...
Petition?
Oh, petitions, thank you. Used that word about three times today, and I can't remember, and I've overused it today. So those were tabled until we got some petitions together. And then later that same day, we had a Fairhope Airport Authority meeting. There's always a lot going on at the airport, but one of note, we're looking at a new sliding gate on the east side, went through the treasurer's report, we talked about the building that we want to build, the FBO that we want to build on the east side, and we've made some modifications to that design to kind of make it more, keep it with the Fairhope, and have a really nice FBO on the east side of that. That was pretty much the highlights of the airport authority meeting. Any other committees' reports? All right, we'll move to department head reports then.[1773.54] head reports then. Kim?
Just to give y'all an update, though, we're working on year-end. It's busy time for us. I didn't know if you wanted me to go through any of the agendas at this time?
Um.
Or you wanna wait?
While, while you're up there, yeah, go ahead and do that if you'd like.
So, one item that, Jason Langley is not here, so I've worked with him on this one item that has to do with Dewberry Engineering. So that was, if y'all know, it was tabled last meeting, and so we've come back to be able to explain what this is. Dewberry had actually done the drawings or the design on the project.
Item eleven, item eleven.
Oh, I'm sorry. Item eleven. Dewberry did the design on this project two meetings back. It was awarded for the construction that is going from Ingleside to Bishop Road, and that was awarded to Along Boring for one point five million in construction. And this contract here is to add the C E and I for that project, and that's at a six and a half percent engineering cost for the C E and I. That comes out to a hundred and two, six oh nine sixty-five. And this will end this contract with Dewberry. And it ends at the Bishop Road. So if y'all have any questions on that, and probably Tim can answer. Questions, too?
I guess, my, my only question is, is the six and a half percent customary for C E and I?
For that size project, yeah. You know, when they're smaller, you'll see if you would, you know, about those fifteen percent.
Well, this is just, I mean, this is not the design aspect, right?
Yeah, construction engineering inspection, for example, on all state projects that pay funds, they put in fifteen percent for C E and I. So as far as the industry standard, that size project, that's, that's reasonable.
I thought we'd already paid in another contract for the design services for this.
We already paid for the design.
The comprehensive.
So that's in addition to the six and a half.
This is a change.
But, but what's called construction engineering inspection, that you have a person there verifying the contractor's doing the, the design.
Right, okay.
And taking care of any, your testing and all that. For example, the feds now do fifteen percent.
Wow, okay, so making sure I've understood you, right.
So, can I ask a question? So Along is the contractor?
That is, that is the contractor.
And so when they went in, they saw that they did not have a C E and I in, embedded? Dewberry saw that Along did not have a C E and I?
No, the engineer usually does that inspections. They're on the, they're on the job with the contractor.
I understand. So when we first got the contractor, they don't hire that engineer? We don't put that money, embed that money into their?
We should, we probably should've brought that forward when we approved.
Should've been a part of it, but it was left out.
Somehow got, okay, that's what I'm asking. I just don't wanna make sure we're not redundant here.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at, too. Fifteen percent that he was mentioning, I, I'm usually used to that being on the front end.
That's what I thought. That's what I'm asking.
The engineering services being about fifteen percent, ten to fifteen percent.
Embedded, right, usually.
Some of the contracts I've seen since I've been here, some of them will have design, all in the engineering contract. Will have design, everything, and the C E and I, all in one contract.
Right.
This one did not. After speaking with Richard, he said, sometimes we don't, because we'll do a design, and then we choose not to do the project.
Okay.
You know, so, but when I did go back and look at the original contract that was done in two thousand nineteen, the rates were there. So the rates were there stating, and it has on here, from a million to two million was six and a half percent. If it went to two million to four million, it turns to six and a quarter. So that was originally stated what their rate would be.
Yeah, I saw that.
What, what was the design engineering cost for this?
A hundred and two, I believe, was right. It was right at a hundred for them to do that design.
Okay, so if it's, if, if a hundred and two six is six and a half, and that's less than a hundred and two, then we know it was six and a half percent or less. So still a pretty good number. So that brings the total to.
Little under thirteen.
A little under thirteen, which is reasonable. That, that's, that's kinda what I was getting at.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Not a, okay.
That sounds real reasonable. Any questions on that, counsel? Yeah, okay. All right, any other items that you have, Kim?
No, I think you'll talk about the vehicles or some of the trucks that were there.
While you're up there, you got anything else you report on while you're there?
Fifteen and sixteen, two more vehicles.
Are they budgeted?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
And they're getting, taking a place of a two thousand eleven F-250 with one hundred and eighty thousand, and I think they're both two thousand eleven. The other one's about a hundred and seventy thousand. Tim felt that we're spending too much on maintenance, so it's time to put them on, I don't know if they're handed down.
Yeah.
One, one has already been pulled out because it's too much maintenance. Costs of repair.
Yeah, I think that was more than what the truck was worth, we'd be putting in it.
What I get, when we, I would like to see us selling most of these. What I'm concerned with, if we hand everything down, then eventually every employee in the company and the city is driving, and we have three hundred vehicles we're insuring and three hundred vehicles we're traveling, having to gas up, and nobody's sharing a ride with anybody ever. So what are y'all thoughts on that, counsel? That's something, we just keep in large.
They may be going to the auction.
Especially if, if we're replacing it 'cause of the repair costs, why are we keeping it?
Well, our, our territory area is way different if they're running, you know, just in town. I'm not sure, these may be going straight to the auction.
Well, these trucks are going actually to, I think, didn't she say it was going to you?
No, I, I think, I think it's, no offense, I do know.
They should.
M R I's electric gets new vehicles, and there is a person trying to inbound those.
Okay.
So what happens, counsel, just to know, for example, if the electric hires a six-year-old truck, and we have a twelve-year-old truck, twelve-year-old truck goes to auction, and we take the six-year-old.
Yeah, there you go.
If it's one that needs a thousand dollar repair, no, we put it on the fence and sell it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, both of these are ten, over ten, so.
So it's time to go to public works.
So the, the net number of.
No.
So the net number of vehicles stays about the same. You just pass them on down, and the oldest one gets pushed out.
As much as possible, which we, we realize that we're growing, too. We realize that we're getting employees, but.
But I think that's the, that's the answer you were looking for.
But you don't need to grow by thirty vehicles a year, thirty drivers a year, I should say.
And you may wanna pull car that you're trying to have something from the warehouse to run to city hall or to run some, you know, those kinda things, too. I don't know.
We need some scooters.
That's right.
Look for cars.
Golf cart.
Golf carts.
Golf carts, aren't you?
Golf carts, no, they're not.
Well, we'll, we'll just repurpose those from Quail Creek and put them in the, and put them in the fleet there.
Not, not street legal.
Yeah.
There you go.
There you go.
Oh, we'll have to get them street legal.
Yeah, well.
Or just change an ordinance to make them, okay, drive whenever.
No, we're not gonna break the rules, Jay.
That'd work.
Our councilman lawyer says that.
I said, change the rule.
No, it's easy, man.
Jay Robinson, counsel, said that.
All right.
Okay, Richard?
Yeah, just quick, three things, kinda looking ahead. As you know, the NPO has funded a project for Gayfer Road. We just got authorization to go to bid from Aldott today, so that's gonna go out, and hopefully, what, in about, probably three meetings from now, you'll see the, hopefully the bids in for that. The other thing.
Those turn lanes, right?
Yes, turn lanes and a signal.
One more intersection in Fairhope that'll be closed for six months.
So those, those street lights, those turn lanes are gonna be coordinated or synchronized?
Yes, they, they, they are part of the I T S system. And on that whole vein, as you know, the, the state has what they call the ATRIP II program. That's a rehabilitation roadway program that we're eligible to apply for. And since the, the last one that we got was Twin Beach, which has taken a little longer, but I think you'll see those roads open this week, is the call for applications are for November nineteenth. The mayor, and as you know, it has to be a city road that intersects with a state road, and what we have identified is Volanta and U S ninety-eight I E Greeno Road is to add a dedicated left and right turn lane as Volanta enters into that road, as well as signalize that intersection. And with that said, we will be bringing that forward to you at the next meeting, asking for permission to apply for that grant. And I don't know how this is gonna work, but as you may or may not recall, there is a proposed development at that southwest corner that is a very large development, and that our goal is that that developer will participate in this grant to cover any hard cost of the city. So in the net effect, that we hopefully can swing this where there's no dollars out of city pockets.
I was thinking, Hunter, didn't they agree to, to make some improvements at that intersection?
Well, they have an obligation to. And so if, if this grant can solve their problem and solve our problems, and they carry the hard cost of that project, then I think it's a win for everybody. Because we're, what, what, their warrants are a little bit less than what we're proposing, because not only full signalization incorporated in the I T S, but also there would be a acceleration lane, turning right to go southbound, as well as a deceleration to, to turn west on the Volanta, as well as a dedicated left and, and right. So kind of a full, full intersection upgrade.
Much needed.
So you'll be seeing that. We've got kinda the preliminary data pulled together, and, but we will need a resolution of support to pursue that. And we'll probably end up getting with Marcus on figuring how that participation of the developer, if it all comes to fruition, would work. So, but they have offered, and we haven't gotten to the point where we've told them, shown them our number yet, but that's getting ready to happen, so.
Richard, do we have to put that on the NPO's visionary list? Because the meeting's Wednesday.
The, the good news is, is we don't have to add it until we, until we receive the grant. So in this case.
I knew it. I thought it.
All projects, no matter where the funding, eventually end up on the, on the list there. So, but I think it's already on the visionary list at the NPO.
I can't remember the, the Atlanta road is.
The main that's been on there for quite some time.
Yes.
The stroke of the project is quite.
Yeah, may have to be updated, but then. And then, as you know, the.
Are you still on that tack?
Yes, yes, sir. And as you know, the, the, the roundabout for the intersection of North Section, City 104 Veterans, and Scenic Ninety-eight is funded for P E for this year with the NPO. So we have reached back out, kinda staying with the, you know, Volker did all the preliminary work back, I think, in two thousand and eight, so they're putting together a proposal to take those plans out of stasis and get them updated. And we'll be bringing that back to you, hopefully, in the next probably two meetings to get authorization to move forward on that.
So the money that we received to improve that triangle property tie into that, we would absolutely need to make sure, sure that while they're designing that roundabout, that if we have the plans, and I've, I've heard mayor mention that several times, still put that, that Robert Brown idea, to put that tunnel, which is a great idea, to put that tunnel under Veterans.
Well, I understand.
Well, that, that tunnel is part of the Gomesa Grant.
Yeah.
And.
But you gotta do it while you're shutting down all the roads and dealing with all that, is what you're.
It's in there.
And, and since I'm, I'm now talking to the chairman of the NPO Policy Board, and I've already kinda talked to the coordinator, as you know, there are projects that were funded for this year for other members that are probably not gonna happen. And I'm hoping that we can move with the speed on this, that we can come back to the NPO and hopefully get construction money this year, and give up our construction money for the next year for those projects that weren't gonna happen this year anyway. I mean, I mean, there's dollars sitting, as you know, in the bank.
You can give me some cliff notes tomorrow.
Well, when we get to that point, it's not time to make that ask the NPO, but I think we, we may be in a position by, because I think mayor and I are in agreement, both of these projects, if they can happen simultaneously, so that when they open, they open together, it would be a shame to have an improvement here and then go to construction here or vice versa. So.
I don't know why, if, if we just take funds early and forego funds later, I don't think that happens.
And, and we're not taking any money out of anybody's mouth, because they're not gonna, they're not gonna be able to use it this year.
That's neutral.
So that, that's just the three big picture items to think about, and we'll cover the agenda items when, when appropriate time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bobby?
Not forced, it's gonna get changed.
Excellent report.
Listen, folks, a shameless plug for the grill. It's still best lunch, breakfast for the dollar that you can get in Fairhope, hands down. Fat?
I'll be brief. We started site work at Rotary Youth today for the, for the new playground installation. And for those that don't know, the Fairhope football game will be at home this week on Thursday night. They'll be hosting Murphy due to the security concerns at Ladd. So we're excited to have them back, but this is the eighth home game Fairhope has played this year, so.
Hey, let me put a caveat on that, too. If you're a season pass holder, you cannot get in for free, because it is a Murphy, it's a home game for Murphy.
For, yeah, senior.
So they're actually in charge.
That's correct, yeah, yeah.
Gate, per state rules, which is only fair to them. It's unfortunate that they can't play, play in their stadium. So, yeah, seven o'clock Thursday, but bring some coinage for the, for the admission if you are our season pass holder.
It's senior night for those kids from Murphy as well.
Yeah, that's a shame.
Yeah, just the caveat.
Jessica?
Okay.
Jeremy?
Absolutely.
I usually don't like being short and sweet, but I'll try my best. I like being hunter long. Anyways, the Murphy site's looking good. Hopefully, we'll be ready to get our contractor in there, start building that substation very soon. The system study resumed today. Hopefully, they'll have a good handle on that this week. The regulator from Volanta finally came in after forever. So hopefully, we'll be installing that this week and maybe switching everything back to normal, which will be a, a good thing. And now that it's cold, it's great. The forty-six twelve bid will be opening Wednesday. So we'll be bringing that back to you guys. Just be prepared for sticker shock, 'cause I think it's gonna be kinda, kinda pricey. That's it. I got a agenda item, fourteen on here, about the E C G safety stuff. I don't know if you wanna, got any questions on that, or you go with it?
Yeah, so I, I may be able to expand on that with your help, Jeremy. I want to say that A M E A used to provide some of this training. The person that provided this training is no longer there providing this training for other reasons, for a variety of reasons. And I believe because A M E A used to provide this training, they are providing us, is it twenty thousand dollars?
I think it was twenty-five.
Yeah, I think it's twenty-five.
Twenty-five thousand dollars towards this twenty-nine thousand.
Yeah, twenty-four, somewhere around there.
God bless, training. That's good stuff.
Since, since they don't have to pay someone now to do that. So the net out-of-pocket to us is four thousand dollars. Now, I guess you could make the argument that, you know, A M E A's profits can be given back to the member cities, but they, they keep a lot of these things in-house. They pay us because they can get, they can, they can, they can manage their money. The, the money for these types of services is a little better than we can, so. Did I get that right, Jeremy?
Yeah, that's great. I mean, you can't put a price on the safety. We need it. Yeah, you just, either way, we gotta have it, so.
The other thing I will say about this is that they are coming to us.
That's correct.
To provide the training. We're not going to Georgia. We don't have any travel costs they're coming out here.
Yeah. Along with what they provide safety-wise, they also provide a whole caveat for the other stuff, like lineman apprentice training, advanced training, substation stuff. They've got a whole slew of things that we can be a part of, you know, once that agreement is signed, that we might be coming back to you guys with to approve other training. That'd be beneficial for us, so.
Very good.
Good.
Yep.
Thank you. Taylor, you got anything? You don't have to have a report.
Water main, late last night, class one sixty.
Come, 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 come up here, please. You're not escaping the camera.
You may get a call, that's fine.
I got a question about it this morning.
We had a water main break about midnight or so. They worked through the night, got it fixed. Class one sixty, it was mainly trees, root, roots got in there and.
Where was it?
Split. It was just west of thirty-three on thirty, Candy Road thirty-two. Eighteen-foot section split, pretty much bell-to-bell is what it was. But it's that classified pressure from trees growing through the years. This one looks like to be trees, tree roots.
Tim, while you're standing up there, I'm gonna praise Tim a little bit. Tim had an interaction with a, with a customer that they were so pleased and impressed with his interaction that they made it to point to come find me, to let me know what a great job he did and how pleased they were with the experience. So good job to you for that.
Yeah, 'cause after the fact, he told me, my neighbor is. Yeah, because after the fact, he told me, my neighbor is, I was like, uh-oh, hopefully I handled that good.
You did. He's not easily impressed, so. Good job.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
But everything else, I think they're trying to wrap up Magnolia at Church by Friday. Just get that intersection. They got a couple valves to put in, really four valves. But it'd be a little water outage Thursday evening. It'd impact a few businesses right there.
So that, so Magnolia should be opening up soon?
I don't think they're going to, it's not going to be completely opened up, but they're trying to wrap up that intersection. But it's coming.
They'll open that up before we close Fairhope Avenue down, right? And I've had people ask me with the Christmas season upon us soon, you know, what's going to happen with Fairhope Avenue? How long is that going to be closed and when? Are they going to do it before or after the holidays?
That section will be pretty much safe for trick-or-treaters. They wanted to have that section done and won't be paved yet.
Yeah, so we were requested that they have that buttoned up for Saturday because we know that it's going to, we have a lot of kids around town. I know that that's a chaotic morning. We asked that they make that buttoned up for Saturday for the weekend. They'll come back and do paving next week. But it's going to be a little bit before they open that intersection back up because of the.
There'll be some temporary water we got to do before they do pressure tests and all that. So be a little, a little bit longer.
So what about Fairhope Avenue? When do we think that's going to close and how long will that remain?
It's going to be a little bit more for that. You know, they've had weather.
Is it going to be after the holidays or before?
Possibly. I mean, unfortunately, because of the weather delays that they've experienced, it's made it difficult. And also, we kind of call it like the treasure hunt, right? Every time they open up another section of the road, they find more stuff that we didn't have mapped. So that's making it a little bit difficult for them as they move. It's a complex job that they're doing. We expect to have a portion of Church, and Richard can stop me if I'm misspeaking, but we expect to have a portion of Church up to about where the Christmas Club is, through the first driveway of the parking garage, that will likely be closing like the second week or third week of November, so they can begin to move down Church. We obviously can't stop that project. Can't stop for the holidays.
Only thing that I start worrying about, if people come into the parking deck off of section, is there ever going to be a time where they can't get out on Church?
I don't think so. I mean, we've asked that that not be the case.
That is one of the contract requirements is they've got to maintain. So they'll do one side and then they'll open it up and close the other side? And just so you know, they have all our parade schedules and all that, so meaning that they know that before parade, they've got to save it up so that the route is usable, their equipment off-site, their food stage out of the driveway or the work area. And they're working on that, so.
And just so you're aware, yeah, we meet with them every Friday morning at eight o'clock. And the first thing we go over is what the next week looks like, what the closures are going to look like and how we can communicate with the public. Because we know that this is an intrusive project. So, I mean, they're doing a great job of staying in contact with us all the time. So it's not perfect. It's not an ideal situation.
No, and nobody's really complained. I think people realize that this has to be done. I haven't received any complaints to speak of, which is great. But we just, we don't want to ever make that mistake of closing Fairhope Avenue and Magnolia because that pushes people through.
And that's not the intention at all. There's got to be an artery.
Got to have one or the other open.
I just want to make sure, when we're talking about Fairhope Avenue, it's just the intersection of Fairhope and Church. You're not going up Fairhope Avenue. Because I was, somebody told me that today. I said, no, that's not, it's just the intersection of Fairhope Avenue and Church. That would be affected.
I saw a valve down Fairhope Avenue.
Right. That's right.
So people won't be out of water. But other than that, no. And that would be done either early, early in the morning, late in the evening, where in traffic is hopefully gone to sleep. But I think that's it.
While you're there, snatch that light out so it's going to get that red and yellow off of there. Either it be yellow or red. That's not, it's got nothing to do with you. I'm looking at the man behind you. You stood in front of him.
Sorry, Jeremy does traffic.
Let me turn this chair a bit. If we could make that light red.
Which light?
On both sides as opposed to yellow. I'll probably hit a guy.
You're talking about eliminating red lights?
Because it's yellow on one side, red on the other.
What are you talking about, Kev?
Yeah.
When they shut the light down at Fairhope Avenue, I mean, yeah, Fairhope Avenue and Church Street, and turn it to blinking, every light in town is red and red. So everybody stops. That one particular light is red and yellow.
On one side.
Church Street runs yellow, Fairhope Avenue runs red. So when you stop and here comes a car, well, he's going to stop. Well, he doesn't stop because it's yellow. Well, he don't have to stop. That's, I would like him to stop. Same as I got to do. That's the whole point. I know, I'm well aware he doesn't have to, but I can't see it. I can't, I, nobody else can see it turning blinking yellow.
You're in a golf cart, aren't you? Yeah.
You're dang right. It hit the brakes quick. Look, I like it. It's very simple, but I want him to stop. Red and red.
We did it straight up.
That's the point.
Kevin went down through the yellow light in the golf cart.
That's right.
No, I went down in the red light. Thought the yellow light was going to guide me with the yellow. I thought it was going to be red. It wasn't red, it was yellow. And he kept going.
Wow.
Which he had the perfect right to do. I just didn't know it.
Seems very reasonable.
Now I do know it. Hopefully, the entire town knows it. But we can switch that to red and red. We'd be great.
Do we need to do a, do we need to do a traffic study on that?
Well, you're not doing anything.
Councilman Boone, I'll go with you and I hope you change it.
I appreciate that.
Take care of that. Real quick, we just have a benefit and wellness fair this Wednesday for all the employees here at the Civic Center. You guys are welcome to join us if you want to stop by. It's between 10:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. We're going to, you know, have all our carriers and everybody there, some local banks and stuff advertising, have some hot dogs for the employees. But to kind of kick off our open enrollment season for employees.
Did you say hot dogs?
Yeah, we're going to have hot dogs.
Yeah, it'll be good.
All right, sounds good.
Hot dogs at the health and wellness fair? Yeah.
You're a little fat. Have you ever?
With chips. Yeah, we're not going to teach people what's in hot dogs, how they're made.
Turkey dogs.
Unless you've got a question for us, the gas department does not have an update, so we're good.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. Eric? Hunter, you have any more? I know you've got several items on the agenda.
Just one, actually. Just the public hearing. So I won't discuss that one. Do want to mention, last week, we did have two comp plan meetings. Next week, we have two more. 6:00 p.m. at the Rotary Youth Club on the fourth and on the, is that the fourth? On the fifth at 10:00 a.m. at Nick Center. So we do have those meetings. And also to bring up the project at Valanta and Grino, they did begin construction today. So people will see, you know, that's a pretty big lot. You'll see some clear, start to see some clearing there. Just that is the reserves of Fairhope. That is the assisted living building that will be built there. And there, we've had our pre-construction. We went over a lot of the rules, regulations and sensitivities of Fairhope. So they'll be meeting those, but there will be some clearing entries coming down in a very visible sight. So they'll start, it should be, I think they started to put their fencing up today and BMPs to manage the runoff. That's all I have.
How has the turnout been at the first couple of comprehensive planning meetings?
Really good. Appreciate Bobby and Michael and Chuck that helped. We had a packed house at Quill Creek. There was, I mean, we were standing room only. We had about 50 here. So for, and for a 10:00 a.m. meeting, that's pretty good. So total, we've had 120 folks. We're kind of keeping up with that. Approximately 120 folks. And do want to, Lisa just reminded me in notes, so thank you. I wasn't going to talk about this, but if y'all get a call, we might actually have some folks show up. There's a River Horse subdivision adjacent, north of North Station subdivision that has been really concerned about a road coming through their neighborhood. That even though North Station was approved in 2005 with a stubb street to connect to a future subdivision, and River Horse was approved over two years ago with its public hearings, they're kind of wondering, why didn't we know this? It was, you know, some folks were not here when the subdivision were approved. But Eric and I are prepared to answer any questions that you may have if people do come up.
What is the plan then? What is the staff recommendation for that to connect to those stubb outs in the?
In this case, these are subdivisions that have both been approved. One in 2019, and we did. It went through planning commission. They looked at alternatives for connecting to the new subdivision, and it was through the North Station.
Through the North Station. Will anything connect to that small lane that goes through there?
So the lane is privately owned by the Fairhope Single. Blueberry Lane is privately owned, not a right-of-way. We are working with the single tax. We actually have a meeting, we have to schedule, to look at a secondary access. If that's a single-use road by the county's, did I say that right? Single-purpose road by the county's definition, which is just a small paved lane. But it's not in a typical right-of-way like you might find.
But it's private.
It's, it's single, yeah, it's the single tax, it's actually a single tax piece of property. So we're working with them to see if we can, you know, what options we have to provide a secondary access for that subdivision, but we don't have an answer for that one yet. So being that it's an approved subdivision, they came and, they were a little delayed before they started construction, but they came and received the permits. They have the permits as needed and went to start construction and I think surprised the residents of North Station.
I've had some inquiries.
Yeah, you think yes.
All right. Thank you, Hunter. Marcus and Lisa? We don't have an executive session tonight, do we? Well, we had 39 items on the agenda. I mean, why not?
Long enough.
Let's jump into that real quick. So as Hunter mentioned, we'll have a public hearing. That's item number five. Item number six is final adoption of an ordinance for a franchise agreement. That Lisa could answer any questions. Should we have anything on that? Number seven is an ordinance to amend the code of ordinance for the traffic committee members. I'm sorry. It says amending chapter 20, traffic. Specifically, is that, that's not traffic committee members, is it? Or is that?
Yes, it is. It's the Street and Traffic Control Committee.
Right. It's the which one?
Street and Traffic Control Committee.
That's the one we just met on. Okay. Did we just do parking authority as well?
Yes, you did.
Lisa, would you be able to answer questions on that?
I can try to test.
Okay. Item number eight on the recyclables, I'm just going to bring up one thing on this. I asked the mayor to sign this for not a year or two, but another 60 days to end on December 31st because really trying to find some options. And I think that there's, I won't talk about recycling with it, you know. The contract is going to where we have to pay them $15 a ton. There are other buyers of only certain recyclables that we could sell to. The problem would be then, what do you do with the rest of the recycling? Can we find something to do with that? Because, you know, our citizens demand that service. They don't want it to go to a landfill. So, Richard, you probably have already answered this question. If I can ask you again, when we, we send this and we send it to ECUA, and we send it mixed, right? We don't sort it. Now, I've had that question asked as recently as today. We don't sort it here. They sort it. Do they only sell certain of those commodities? And if the answer is they only sell certain of those commodities, what do they do with the rest?
Well, and just so you know, the last audit they did of the constituents of our recycle stream was from January and February 21. And basically, their, their report was is that there was, the whole stream, there was 14, a little over 15% that they deemed to be unsellable, okay? And that's such thing as wet corrugated cardboard, wet paper, shredded paper, film wrapped paper, bag recyclables, the Walmart bags. They just, there's just not a market for that. And then there's what they considered a contaminant, which runs about 10.5% of us. And those are, you know, things like textiles and full containers, tanglers, bag waste, non-rigid plastic films, expanded polystyrene foam, styrofoam. They just kick it out. So that's what, what happens as part of that is it goes out of their MRF and it goes straight to the landfill, which is adjacent to it there at Contonment. So that's what they do with it. So they're saying that everything that they're, we're running about 85% gets into the recycle stream and is marketed and sold. So.
That's not bad.
No, not terribly bad.
I've got a question. On the, why do we want to cap this at 60 days? I was thinking it was more of a, not necessarily a contract that we have to use them, but like a fixing the price. Do we want to?
I can answer that. The answer is that we're still looking at some other options to see if there are another buyer or another option, a place that, like, for instance, we can find somebody to buy our cardboard and our.
Mixed paper.
Our mixed paper product. We have a buyer that will pay us to do that.
Right.
Now, we're paying and we're going all the way to Contonment.
And that's, that's.
And then we can ship by, let's say, the railroad car load glass. It's not going to a landfill. It costs maybe $800 a load, which I think is a very, very small cost to keep it out of a landfill. We can dispose of that, if I will, to someone that will use that glass. Am I, am I right on that?
Yeah, we have a materials buyer in Atlanta that right now, the last time, we had to pay for the cost of the shipment, but they would take the glass at no payment to us, but no payment.
No payment to us, but no payment to them, other than our shipping costs, which keeps it out of a landfill. And it's, I think it's a pretty small cost. I mean, how much would you say we send up there when we send up railroad car? That's got to be.
Well, last time it was by tractor-trailer truck, and it was, it was $800 a load for three trucks, so $2,400.
Twenty-four hundred dollars to keep glass out of landfill.
I'm all for, for going the, you know, the better financial route.
That's what we're looking at. We just needed to buy some time.
Yeah, I guess I just, I just thought it was more of a, that we were, they were setting the price. If we sign, I didn't know we were committing to sending them all.
Well, if we do sign the long-term, yeah, we're committing to sending them everything.
No. Basically, this agreement, one, says when we bring them mixed recycles, we pay them a tipping fee of $15 a ton.
Right.
And it caps the maximum that we can bring them. That is, we're currently at 1,200 tons per annual, okay? But if we decide tomorrow not to take them.
To switch and go somewhere else.
We don't take them anything and we don't pay them anything, okay? And I think the, and it's that French word, the way to get out of it. We can do it five days' notice, so.
Right, okay. Well, then, that's really good information.
Because that, and that, my point was, instead of doing 60 days and when it come back, if you just sign the longer-term agreement, we can still be shopping for a better alternative.
I didn't realize that we could.
If I'm understanding that right.
And, and, you know, if that was, you know, the nice thing is, is understand, we get a lot of corrugated cardboard and a lot of paper dropped off. Our backdoor businesses, our backdoor accounts, our commercial accounts downtown, probably the vast majority of their recyclables are the fibers, cardboard and paper. We don't see a lot of aluminum cans and things like that. Now, restaurants, yeah, a lot of glass. But again, generally, you know, we could, we could look at a split program because ECUA is not going to punish us if our tonnage drops in half.
They will punish us for our tonnage dropping, but we can't, what we can't do though is we can't cherry pick our recyclables and then expect to only pay them 15. That's based on a.
That's based on them making it profitable.
A standard ton. A standard ton of Fairhope recycling is going to consist of X percent of this material and X percent of this and X percent of this. So if you took all your valuables out of that ton and sold it somewhere else and then send them the leftovers, they're not going to charge us that much.
But if we signed a two-year agreement with them and then 120 days from now, we figure out, okay, we can recycle our cans this way, bottles to Atlanta, the mixed paper, we've got a buyer for that, and we just got to store the plastic for a while, we could do that with five days' notice to them.
Yes.
If that's the case, then I don't have a problem with long-term.
Yeah, and there's nothing that compels us. If we decide tomorrow there's a better alternative, we're not obligated to, they don't have exclusivity to our stream, meaning that that is, we. stream, meaning that, that is, we have just agreed upon that they would take up to this amount per month, and this is what we'd pay them to take it. That, that is-
And that's all I was saying, is we may not get this done in 60 days.
Aluminum still has some value, and probably going up a good bit. And, and the mayor said that, that people will pilfer through people's recycling and take the valuable stuff out of the recycling. Is that a widespread problem in the city where people-
I don't want to think about pilfering, but think about it this way. Right now, our constituent stream is 1.6% aluminum cans, okay? So in a hundred ton month, only 1.6 tons get in, into our stream. Most of your real dedicated recyclers, and I would be one of those, I have a special bag that I crush my aluminum cans and put in, and when I get four or five of those bags, I carry them to the recycler, because sometimes they pay as much as 37 to-
So they're just pilfering themselves?
Yeah, that's, that's mostly, that, that tends to get intercepted and kept aside because that's, that's the money. And we're not out of line. I was looking at, at Mobils and Foley's aluminum. Mobils only 1.9, and Foley's doing a little bit better. I think their heavier beer drinkers down there, 2.2% is their, their stream, so. I didn't say that, I'm sorry.
I knew that was covered.
So, so we're not out of the line, but yeah, the, the aluminum pretty much gets intercepted by the recycler, so.
Okay. Well, then what was the original term? If that's the case, I don't have a problem with going-
Like two years, wasn't it, or a year?
Yeah, it's, it's two ye, right now, basically, and-
What were they asking for in that, then? Since I asked for the, just to end on December 31st?
It would go to the end of the fiscal year 2023, which is the end of September of 2023. They, they follow the fiscal year just like we do.
End on, say-
So 9/30/2023?
Yeah. And I'd have no problem, as I told the mayor this morning, that if-
I'm gonna edit that on there.
Okay.
I'm glad, that's a good catch.
Well, I, I just, I'm all for finding the better alternative, though.
Council president can also take out for 60 days.
Right.
Is that reported on?
Yeah, okay, for that. So strike that, council. So if we do that now, when we get to that, I don't have to say amended, it's just, I'm just gonna read it without the 60 days. So if you'll make a note of that, too, clerk. Striking for 60 days. An initial term shall begin on the effective date as defined in paragraph 2.4 and end on September 30th.
2023.
30th, 2023. And it says, however, the parties may extend the term in this agreement upon mutual written agreement. And in that agreement, it gives us that provision to end earlier?
Force de mord, or however it's.
Major.
Major, thank you.
Okay. Well, it doesn't matter anyway. We could keep the contract, still sell it all somewhere else, right?
That's right. And, and they would eventually get wise, if all of a sudden they were just getting junk from us, and they may want to change the terms, and we can deal with that at that time, so.
Very good.
You know, I-
And they have the right to reject it as well.
Yeah, and, and, but we're doing a good job of taking them a clean stream, so we, we are, we're proud of how we process things, so.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. And we just, and we, and I think the one thing, last little comment on that was you mentioned plastics, is, I think for us to be effective at this, we, we need to find a plastics, a buyer. And if we, if we did that, we could, we could probably get our cost down. And then having said all that, and I talked to Richard DeMar about this last week, I, I kind of was under a false impression that we're talking about huge amounts of money, and, and we're just, and we're not even, we're not talking about huge amounts of money.
$30,000 or something.
Maybe 30, $40,000. And then you go through all this effort, and you really, you know, I probably spent $30,000 worth of effort trying to come up with something, but, so, gotta consider that, too. I just want to make sure it's, it's getting, you know-
At least researched, checked.
Recycled and not, you know.
Right, right.
At, at, at a reasonable price, so.
Right.
Okay.
Well, at one point, we weren't paying it all, that's the-
Well, at one point, we were getting paid for it.
That's what I'm saying. We weren't paying it all, we were getting paid for it. That's, I think that's what kind of got up your skirt.
Which may, we didn't make money. We, we didn't make money, but it offset a lot of our cost of-
Right.
It's stopping the pain.
Right.
It's stopping the pain.
It's stopping the pain. Well, you never know, but over, over a five or 10-year period, it could pay for that new recycling truck, it picks it up. You save 20, $30,000 a year. It certainly helps. Okay, item nine is authorize the mayor to execute an intergovernmental funding agreement. This is just for beautification of that roundabout that the county is paying for at 13 and 32. You know, if we want to have landscaping, we're gonna provide lighting, and also provide for any kind of water that we might need out there to irrigate that. So there's nothing else to that, is that, Richard?
No, sir, it's, it's, it's what we did at both 48 and at 8, so the, the feds will not pay for the pretty concrete that looks like brick fibers, and they will not pay for landscaping. Generally, what we do is have them pre-plumb it for irrigation. We'll go ahead and work our order, block it out, make it drainage live, and after they get out of the potting ground, we'll come in and put inside the concrete and make it here now. Lighting would be Jeremy's department, so I'm not bothered.
Item number 10 is authorizing Mayor Sullivan to execute an intergovernmental funding agreement between the City of Fairhope and Baldwin County for the use of voting machines, and also county voting machine custoding employees for municipal elections. This is something that just has to be renewed periodically. Lisa, how often is that renewed?
Evidently every three years. They won't, in, our elections are every four years.
Right.
Okay.
Of course. All right. Lisa, you'll be able to answer any questions that we may have on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Kim covered item 11 in detail in, earlier in her report. Item number 12, Richard can talk about that air conditioning system. Just in a nutshell, you know, we questioned whether or not there was a 30-ton unit needed, and they will be replacing the HVAC with whatever size. They're gonna be removing a 30-ton system, but they'll be replacing it with whatever it is that's needed. And Richard and I talked before the work session, you know, five, five or 10 tons. But because if we want to connect to the existing duct work-
That's where the engineering architecture goes in.
Yeah, it requires some engineering, requires a little design work there. Item 13 was covered by Hunter in great detail in the work session, and he'll be available for any questions on that. Item 14 was covered by Jeremy in his report. Item 15 and 16-
They were covered.
Was covered by Tim. Item 17, I believe is a budgeted amount. And the reason we're putting in so many of these big ticket items right now is because we've learned that, that they make, they take a long, long time to receive these, and also if you don't act soon, you won't get one. So, Richard, I guess if we have any questions about that, that would come to you, right?
Yes, sir.
All right. Item number 18 is authorizing some repairs to a truck. We typically don't do this, but this is over $15,000. It also says an insurance claim's been filed for the damages. Do we anticipate receiving that money, Kim?
Mrs. is working on that project.
Okay. Do you think we'll be fully reimbursed, less some deductible?
It's gonna be less the deductible plus the drive shaft. Most of that money right there is labor, actually.
Okay.
I'm working on that, because what happened is the drive shaft broke and it started swinging and tore up all the hoses and fittings and stuff underneath it.
What's the value of the truck?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Not talking about a 2005 Tacoma.
This is our tractor trailer that we pulled up.
Okay.
I got you.
There you go, thank you.
Okay. Council items 19 through-
28.
34. Actually, through 34 are all community development appropriations that were approved in the budget. 35 is a request to close the streets in Fairhope on Saturday, February 12.
Pirate Dash.
Pirate Dash. Item 36 is a request to close Bancroft, it's an intersection of Fairhope Avenue to Oak on December the 12th, from 12 to 5. Richard, or, you know, we, we probably want to talk to the police department. I mean, what if we have some other roads closed in town? You know, Bancroft, when, when sections, section's been backing up a lot because of the road construction. The people are diverting, you know, they're, they're going over to Bancroft to make it through town a lot. And this is a, it's a Sunday, so not, not as busy as a, as a Saturday. You mean, I, I want to, I want to grant this, but we just need to be mindful that this is dumping traffic. You know, traffic may be dumped on Bancroft, which is becoming used extensively because of all this construction.
And it's not much space over there.
I, I wish, you know, have we looked at this enough to-
I'm usually gonna talk about this, but have you noticed the name on that?
Yeah, is this your wife?
It's my wife.
Well, there we go.
And I do know their application went through the police department, but it's-
Does the police department know when roads are gonna be constructed?
Well, and that's a good question. I think we can, we can check with them if they show up. Do they have the plan? Are they included in the charter?
Yeah, there's, I mean, yeah, there's vague, vague meetings. I, I don't, I don't foresee in this one on that Sunday that there should be any public issues, I mean, I mean-
Are the kids out of school at this point?
No.
So we should be.
Well, but I mean, it's a Sunday.
It's Sunday.
Well, but no, they're, they're not out until the next Friday.
I mean, Bancroft is north-south, and yes, we interfered with the church, which is north-south, but we still have sections which is north-south. And on Sunday, I think, you know, after church traffic, I, I don't, we didn't see a potential issue over it.
Yeah. What I was thinking was if kids were out of school, people would come in for traveling, and there'd be more traffic, is what I was thinking. But if they're not-
I, I'm just, I'm only concerned because of construction traffic. I didn't want to gotcha. We didn't ask the question, and then we found out that some other route through town was closed. Can we get caught for that? Okay. All right. Item 37 is an appointment to the Fairhope Environmental Advisory Board. Item 38 has been removed from the agenda. They reappointed to the harbor board at the request of council, or a councilman, I should say, and then public participation. Any questions? Nope. All right, we've got about five minutes. Looking at Jeremy. See you all right before 6:00.